The United States of America. In the Republic of States. One nation under God. And did this. With everything and justice for all.
Is Brenda Kupchak on?
Uh, no, she is driving from Hartford. I'm sorry, I wasn't sure if Jen told you.
Oh, she-
She will, she'll hop on as soon as she gets home.
Oh, okay.
But she, obviously, she said to start without her, so.
Okay. First item is to hear updates from the first selectmen. I only have one thing to say. That we will be releasing the selectmen's budget at noon tomorrow, midday tomorrow. So that will officially start the process. Item number four, police chief to hear, consider and act on authorizing an annual software maintenance agreement between NextGen and the Town of Fairfield Police Department for Law Enforcement Administrative Software CAD RMS services for the period July 1st, 2024 through June 2030, 2025. This approval includes the authorization to enter into renewals on similar terms and conditions. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Deputy Chief Wyatt, thank you.
Thanks for having me. So NextGen is a sole source as well as state contract technology platform that we've been using since 2000. It is the foundation of the majority of our daily operations, as it runs our dispatching systems, reporting systems, and record-keeping systems. Annual costs have increased reasonably and incrementally since 2007 due to staying current with the latest technologies and due to NextGen's typical operating cost increases. We respectfully request that the Board of Selectmen approve renewal of annual services at the 3% discounted early payment cost of $20,701.76 for the period July 1, 2024 through June 30, 2025.
Thank you. So that, that is a 3% discount to the 21, 342?
Correct.
Just a question. And this may or may not be relevant as of the RTM meeting last night, and there was some discussion about when calls, residents call in for noise, noise, public disturbance, and there was discussion on how officers would it in the computer system? Is that this system that they're using?
It's all part of this system.
And is there any flexibility? There was discussion about adding our language of our town ordinance to that system? Is that something that would be asked now? Any sort of add-ons to what we're currently before us?
I, uh, there are ways to manipulate the system to track certain data. I think I know what you're asking for. I don't think it has that capability. So it's communication with the state is not going to accommodate having town ordinance charges populated.
Okay.
But we do have workarounds to keep data with a tagging system that we have manipulated into the system. So it's, it's not perfect, but it is, it is a way of keeping track of certain things.
Just kind of came up last night, so I decided, and I just wanted to know if it was connected at all to this. So thank you for just, it sounds like if we can approve this and if there's anything that needs to be fine-tuned, if it's possible, we can do that after that. So I will be supporting it.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Item 4B, to hear, consider and act on authorizing an annual software maintenance agreement between IDE MIA and the Town of Fairfield Police Department for Law Enforcement Administrative Software for the period July 26, 2024 through July 25, 2025. This approval includes the authorization to enter into renewals on similar terms and conditions. May I have a motion? Deputy Chief.
In 2020, the Department of Emergency Services and Public Protection contracted with IDE Mia to serve as the state's biometric technology for the secure capture and transmission of electronic fingerprints. This is an identification and criminal status verification service used for criminal investigations, pre-employment screenings, and a variety of other certification and licensing applications. We respectfully request the Board of Selectmen approve renewal of annual services at the cost of $5,334 for the period July 6, 2024 through July 25, 2025.
Just wanted to make sure that I understand, have you used this or are you implementing this this year?
It already exists. This was implemented a couple of years ago.
No questions?
Um, any comments or questions from the, comments from the public? Hearing none, all in favor, say aye. Okay, motion passes. Um, and item 4C, to hear, consider and act on authorizing an annual software maintenance agreement between Bosch Crash Data Group and the Town of Fairfield Police Department for Law Enforcement Administrative Software for the period August 22, 2024 through August 22, 2025. This approval includes the authorization to enter into renewals on similar terms and conditions. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Okay, Deputy Chief.
So this is a software our crash reconstructionists use to access black box data from vehicles after motor vehicle crashes. This helps to complete more timely and thorough investigations with more accurate resolutions, and we respectfully request that the Board of Selectmen approve renewal of annual services at the cost of $1,500 for the period of August 22, 2024 through August 22, 2025.
How long have you been using the software? Do you know just the history of the department?
It's definitely been a few years. I'm not sure exactly.
And there are a lot of other softwares that you could use if we didn't approve this. What makes this?
Um, I couldn't tell you.
You've been using it, and it's been working?
Yeah.
Good?
Yep, I'm good.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Deputy Chief. The next item is for an appointment, to hear, consider and act upon the following appointment, Historic District Commission alternate, which requires RTM approval. James Akamando, you, 220 Jennifer Road, term 11, 2019 to 11, 2024, to replace Alyssa G. Stack, unaffiliated, who resigned. May I have a motion? Second. Mr. Akamando, welcome.
Thank you. I'd like Christine and Brenda when she joins. It's a great opportunity, so thank you for the consideration. Jim Akamando, been a resident since early 1988. I'm here from California. I worked in the credit card industry for 40 years in New York City in the last 25 on my own, self-employed, since retired. Passions of mine are the educational system. I've been with the PTA for 24 years at all levels of PTA, from local president all the way up to national president in Washington DC. Been in the Boy Scouts a sequel amount of time. Eagle Bad, Sons of Eagle Bad, with Troop 82, I was a first church. I'm on the national, I have a standing committee on the national board for Boy Scouts in Dallas, as well as the president of the Connecticut Yankee Council, and I was an assistant scoutmaster here locally. So my interest in this is that we raised our family here. My wife's a schoolteacher for more than 40 years. She's currently at Hollen Tail, second grade. I chose Fairfield even though I was living in, or working in New York City because of its historical nature. I'm an American history buff primarily, and the impact that Fairfield had made on the American Revolution, the impact that it's made in the state of Connecticut, and the town itself is why I endured a two-hour commute each way into New York City so I could come home to this neighborhood. We live in the Hollen Tail area. Most historic home in our area is the Silliman House, by overlook. Federal Silliman had a great role in the American Revolution as a captured general in the Long Island Sound. We're also boaters. We have a boat in Southport Harbor, and we have a boat in Black Rock Harbor. Both of those are selected based on their historical significance. Members of Fairweather Yacht Club, that goes back to the original days of shipbuilding in Bridgeport and Black Rock, when Black Rock was actually part of Fairfield. So my love of history is the reason why we actually joined the Congregational Church here on Post Road. Been there since we moved in. Been affiliated with the Historical, or Churchill History Museum since day one, when they were part of, when they were on the property of the church, of course, we turned that into Operation Hope. And been on the finance committee and the endowment committee probably for the last 15 years over at the History Museum. I'm now training to be a docent, to take kids around, which is actually, my wife's been at for me to do that for a long time. So the historic districts within our town, the three of them, we patronize all the time, whether it's coming up to Greenfield Hill, for all kinds of activities, especially for the Dogwood Festival, or the boat in Southport Harbor, and, and of course affiliation with our troop. It's 100 years old, next year, our troop, one of the oldest troops in Connecticut, has been in the basement of the church for that length of time, the affiliation with the church. And more importantly, the understanding by having all those relationships, the understanding of the role that actually being on the commission of the Historic District plays. So I didn't have to read this document, although I have, this voluminous 119-page document. Most of that is self-explanatory, but it's really about the appropriateness, you know, preservation is about moving forward, it's not about the past, but it's about generations to come. So it's really important that we take a look at not only existing historic districts, but also properties that may be in jeopardy. We lose so many of them that's just get down, you know, tear it torn down, or, or just fall to, unfortunately, fall by the wayside like we did for a beautiful hotel that was literally right across the street here. By the time that got any permissions to move forward, unfortunately, we lost that property. So I think it's important to actually look at historic districts in the sense of the future, but also to, to maintain the properties that we currently have, but within a framework that we work with the people who actually live there on a daily life. So, and look at the appropriateness of the structures, the buildings, et cetera, that fit in with our town and our history. So I thank you for the opportunity for this and look forward to it if I get chosen, and I'll be right, so.
I just, I was not expecting to learn that much. So, yeah, I need to get a tour from you.
Thank you, Mr. Akamando. It's always nice to see you.
You too.
Mr. Akamando and I have served on PTA many years ago at Fairfield Little High School. I, um, I appreciate all that you bring to the job. I know you'll bring, I've seen your passion for Boy Scouts, for everything that you do, and I think that this commission will be lucky to have you, and I look forward to seeing the work that you'll do. I think it's also, many of the members currently live in historic districts, a fact that you know, and I think is a value add to the commission and that it enhances the reach throughout our community. Kupchak also joined us, Mr. Gerb, I don't know if you noticed. Hi, Brenda.
Hi, good to see you, Jen. Just wanted to say thanks for stepping up. Always a pleasure to have you serving the community.
Thank you, Brenda, I really appreciate it. All right. My PTA's ears perked up when he said budget, because that started the whole ball rolling.
Well, thank you, Jim. Your volunteerism is legendary. Any comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you all so much. I appreciate it. Take care.
I'd like to make a motion to add an item to the agenda, which was left off by accident, and, um, Selectwoman Kupchak, you should have this, hopefully, in your inbox. To hear, consider and act on authorizing the purchasing authority to enter into the proposed contract with Terry Contracting and Materials to provide all materials, labor, and equipment necessary for the Turney Creek Culvert replacement, including the base bid and alternate number three, as detailed in bid number 2024-44, for a total contract value of $5,666,928, with further authorization to execute contract change orders up to 10% of the contract value. Funding for this contract is available in account 2630-5070-57160, Turney Creek Riverside Drive Tiegate expenses. May I have a motion to add this item to the agenda?
So moved.
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
This item, is it added to the agenda? May, I guess I-
I have a motion to-
May I have a motion to, to discuss this item?
So moved.
Same here by Selectwoman Kupchak. Okay, Adam, would you like to start?
Sure, yes, Adam Toulon, Purchasing Director. Just briefly, as you mentioned in the resolution, the town put out bid number 2024-44 for Turney Creek Culvert replacement. We received three bids back in January. After completing scope review with the two low bidders, it was decided, we'll go ahead with the low bidder, Terry Contracting. Add alternate number three, base bid plus add alternate number three, which has to do with disposal of contaminated soils. We thought it best to include that. That's basically all about the procurement. Eli has anything to add about the project or any questions?
Oh, no, we anticipate starting the project in the springtime. We already met with utilities. We're putting together a detour plan now to share that with the traffic authority. So this is going to be kind of case, start the contractor by some new contract.
And Attorney Pierce has reviewed and made edits to the document, so it's been through legal review.
I feel like we've been discussing this project for a long time.
Finally, just, you know, a year and a half.
Any, any questions or comments from the board?
You mentioned, I'm sorry. What? You mentioned detours. Any timeline for start to finish? How long does a project take?
About 14 to 16 months. So we're going to be sending notifications to the residents outlining the detour plan. We'll post it on our website as well. We'll continue to provide, provide updates to the residents.
Any other questions or comments? From the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Unanimous? Thank you very much. Eli, you probably don't want to go. Oh, no, there's item number seven, Fire Chief, to hear, consider and act on a services agreement between policeapp.com, DBA, firefighterapp.com, and the Town of Fairfield Fire Department to recruit and register applicants for the screening test provided by another provider, Fire Police Selection, Inc.
May I just, if I have sewer nets?
This approval includes the authorization to enter into renewals on similar terms and conditions. May I have a motion?
So moved.
Second. Chief?
Yes, thank you. So since I came to Fairfield, we have worked to restructure our recruitment and testing process to be more exclusive, to have greater diversity, and to lower the cost. And over three cycles, two years each, we have joined in consortium with other fire departments around the state to do a statewide test, which has increased our number of applicants and certainly improved diversity in the list. And that diversity has reflected in the hiring in Fairfield, where we have hired three women in the department. Because it has become very expensive through the vendor that we're using, that becomes an obstacle to applications and an obstacle to diversity. So we have followed the testing process that other communities are not part of the consortium and have developed a plan to use Police App, similar to what the local police department uses and other fire departments, and when it goes out, it's called Firefighter App, but, you know, the parent company of Police App. They will do all of the advertisement improvement and process the applications. We will then test through Fire Professional Services, Inc., and then the interviews will be conducted at all of the local law. The cost to the Town of Fairfield will be $950, and the cost to the applicant will be less than $100, and that's down from almost $245. So it's a significant improvement for the experience and for the applicants.
Any questions or comments from the board?
No, um, thank you for being proactive, just trying to make our application process more accessible to our group of applicants.
And I would just echo that, you know, the chief has done a really great job on diversifying the fire department under his leadership. We hired the first two women in over 25 years, so kudos to the chief, and I look forward to seeing more of it. Thank you.
We have a lot to do, that's for sure.
I think if you have thoughts, anything you need to help move that work forward, happy to support it.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Chief. I took this item out of order by accident, so we're going to go back to item number six, purchasing authority to hear, consider and act on authorizing the purchasing authority to enter into the proposed contract with Wright Pierce to provide all engineering services necessary for design, bidding, and construction administration for Phase 5 Sewer and Manhole Rehabilitation Project for the Water Pollution Control Facility, as detailed in the Wright Pierce proposal dated January 22, 2024, for an amount not to exceed $262,600. Funding for this contract is available in account number 130130110-54360. Inflow and infiltration correctional improvements pending Town Attorney's final review. May I have a motion?
Second.
Okay, Adam?
Yep, so as Adam Toulon, Director of Purchasing, so as it's indicated in the last line of the resolution there, Attorney Pierce does have the contract in hand, he just, he didn't have the time to fully vet it before this meeting. So we were looking for approval, you know, sort of having his successful review of the document, which the board has done in the past, as I understand it. In terms of the, the contract, I, you know, John Marsilio and John Bodie have worked with Wright Pierce to refine the scope of work, and the procurement policy is satisfied, not only has Wright Pierce done the previous phases, but as a, as a firm on our on-call engineering list, that satisfies the procurement policy. So that's about all I have, and I don't know if you, you ever do want to have anything to add.
Well, you are our WPCA expert.
I am not our WPCA expert, yet, learning. So I would ask if these two gentlemen would just give a high level of reporting to the board, and just for the public's sake, we've heard a lot, you've spoken a lot about I&amp;I in some speeches over the last couple of months, and just so maybe the public who are turning in can hear a little bit about what this project is going to be doing.
My name is John Marsilio. I'm, um, about seven or eight years ago, Wright Pierce did a study of the water system in town, sewer system in town, San Terry Sewers, and they highlighted the fact that there was an incredible amount of exterior water coming into the sewer system that was taxing the treatment facility. It was a burden on the treatment. Due the extent that almost 50% of the treated effluent was from groundwater or intruding from stormwater or leakers and some pumps and water. So they have been charged with ending what would be labeled Phase 5 investigation. They have identified through Phase 5, an array of issues that have to be addressed, you know, to mitigate this intrusion, and this is the contract that addresses those issues in Phase 5 that they have identified, Phase 5. This is all Phase 5, and the format of this contract is three phases, but for you to know, this is a not-to-exceed contract. It will be billed on the basis of hours that are validated in their billing format, so that we can expect without any scope change, meaning any other issues that are given to them to, that it's, there will be no more than this number as our obligation here.
There's a lot of, a lot of anecdotes around our sewer system, but I got to ask you a question. Are, the manhole covers, is it true that we sometimes, when water from the sound might come up on Lake Beach Road or some other roads, that we actually get saltwater going into the system?
Sure.
Yeah?
By and large, manholes have holes in them. We have many of them across town. It's studied what we're addressing, a portion of those issues. Understand, this is geographical area we're addressing now. This is the first of, of an ongoing, uh, to address the I&amp;I throughout the system. So geographically, there's a geographic fence, and we're put in that, we're addressing anything that we found today there. So throughout town, you're right, there are many, many manholes that, they have holes in them for manhole, for gases to escape, and-
Yeah.
And we have to replace those with solid manholes. So this is just the beginning. This is, to my knowledge, Phase 1 of addressing the need for the I&amp;I system.
I recall you saying, if you don't address that, then you could end up with saltwater being pumped. If you were to put in new equipment at the, at the, at the facility, you, you, you might be pumping a lot of water, but it's some saltwater as well, which is, yeah.
I mean, anything that gets into the, it's, it should be a closed system, it should be a tight system.
Right.
Anything that enters it is superfluous, it's above and beyond what people are treating. Now, no system's perfect, but there are goals. Generally, you would like to see, you're just going to get down to an I&amp;I of less than 25%, depending on the age of the system, because this is a constant situation where pipes are separating and there are deep connections and breaking, and so this, this will be an ongoing program. The WPCA Board recognizes this, everyone associated with the maintenance of the system understands that this is something that just has to be addressed and has been addressed in recent years, so.
So moved for 80 years. Thank, thank you, but. Any other comments from the board?
Um, I would just say that I'm glad this is finally coming forward. We were working on this for a long time. Quite surprised to, to learn from Mr. Marsilio several years ago that we have so much water infiltrating our sewer system, and they're actually processing it at the sewer plant, which is so unproductive. So I'm really glad to see this. Um, I wanted to ask, we, I think it was our, I don't know which meeting, it may have been the meeting before or, or the last meeting, that we were talking about the operational and, or, um, facility audit that was done, and that you said that the HR department was trying to just make sure some things were fixed in it before it was released. Do you know, can you share what the status of that is?
Are you asking me, or?
Yes.
Uh, the, the, the report is posted on the WPCF website, and, but the HR Director, Simpson, posted her own cover letter to let people who read the, that report on the operation- posted her own cover letter to let people who read the, that report on the operations know that some of the things that they suggested were not practical or possibly even possible here.
Okay. Mr. Marsilio, do you have anything to add?
No, I was just gonna say that those reports are complete, they've been shared with the commission and the HR director has made her comments available and attached them to the reports.
Thank you.
Any comments from the public? Seeing none, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much, looking forward to it. The next item is, we're going to hear an update from Mark Barnhart, Community and Economic Development Director on the Bird e-Scooter Shared Mobility Pilot Program.
Good afternoon, Mark Barnhart, Director of Community and Economic Development, seems to have drawn the short straw with regard to this program, but I was supposed to be joined by the police chief, but I guess he wants nothing to do. So for the last couple of years, we've had a pilot program with Bird rides to allow for a shared electric scooter service here in town. We have an operating agreement that provides for automatic renewal each April, as we provide notice that we wish to terminate that notice prior to the beginning of that term. You know, Bird is a operator that provides these services worldwide, both e-scooters, electric scooters as well as bikes, you know, the thought or the intent behind it, which we've talked to the ethical light committee, was to try to eliminate some of those short trip connections, to provide an option for people to scooter instead of copping in a car. Recently, this, December this year, Bird filed for Chapter 11 bankruptcy protection in the United States, they have operations in Europe and Canada which were not affected. They've continued to provide services throughout as they restructure, but they're looking to find this. So during the time, you know, they operate, basically, we give them a license to operate within the public right away, it's a dockless system, so they don't need a docking station per se, people can pick up a scooter and use it and then drop it off, they are repositioned by a local fleet manager that services the fleet, makes sure that they're properly charged in terms of maintenance and also repositions the scooters to areas where they see the most need. And we can track all this through a dashboard we have access to, so we can see where the scooters are being used at any given time, as well as getting information on ridership data. So we did authorize them to operate in a very smaller, small area of town, primarily south of I-95 from Westport to the Bridgeport line, that was encompass a little bollto grab the southern fringe of the Fairfield University, Fairfield University campus. They are popular with, with young people, but I've seen riders of all ages using these scooters throughout town. We got initially in the first year of operation, we saw over 19,000 rides, 4,300 unique riders. We basically operated from May through end of November, so it's seasonal usage. This past year in 2023, ridership declined, I think we're a little bit more mature now, the folks that are using it, it's not a novelty anymore, people are using it or, you know, using it for either, for that, for the intended purpose, really, but we did see a drop off both in terms of rides and unique riders, as well as the duration of the rides and all the various metrics. Overall, and, and, you know, the police department, I've talked to both police department, Parks and Rec, Parking Authority, feedback from users themselves has generally been positive. We do get a number of complaints, they've been persistent since the day in which we launched, most of those deal with scooters that are not parked in the, parked in places where they shouldn't be, and on private property, maybe they're blocking a sidewalk, people are sometimes careless in terms of how they deposit the scooters. The bigger issue that we typically hear from is complaints regarding unsafe riding or people that are, that shouldn't be riding because they're underage, but it's just limited to folks that are 18 years of age or older. You know, obviously you're not supposed to be riding two, two or three people on a scooter, but increasingly, many of these complaints deal with scooters that are privately owned and operated, so we've seen, as these things become more popular, people are going out and buying their own. So a lot of the complaints we're getting now, and they won't go away because their scooters are here to stay whether or not. To address the underage riding, Bird did introduce this past year a facial recognition as part of their app, it's only for new users, so you had an existing account, it didn't cover that, but for anyone that signed up, they had to take a selfie which matched to a driver's license as well as a credit card on file. So we have seen some drop off in those types of complaints, but we got more complaints in terms of scooters not being where they shouldn't be or being left in areas for longer than what they should be. And what I attribute that to, we did have a local fleet manager that was well-known within the community, that took a lot of pride and ownership initially, that changed this past year and the change in fleet management, I think, did result in a number of increased complaints, the police department certainly dealt with most of those. So that's generally it, I'm happy to take any, any questions, I do think that, you know, initially we were, this was a pilot program, the intent was to gather some information and data to see whether or not there is demand or need for the service, deal with some of these operational issues, but at some point, if this is something that the town wishes to continue, I think we need probably a regulatory scheme to address it, partly because we do get inquiries from other operators besides Bird. And, and so the, with Bird initially, because they were one of the few that dealt with a smaller fleet size, they were willing to limit the number of scooters in operation to 50 to 75, which seemed more manageable for a town our size, but we, we certainly see other operators in, in this arena that would like to do business here if they were given the opportunity to do so. So again, if that's something long-term, I think we're gonna need an ordinance and some type of regulatory scheme to deal with that. So that's my report.
Any comments or questions from the board?
Sorry, you got stuck with it, Mark?
Well, as most things, I volunteer for these sometimes, so.
No good deed goes unpunished.
I should learn that by now.
Yeah, you haven't.
Has the fleet grown since year one?
It has crept up in terms of number of scooters in operation, occasionally we saw more than 75 scooters at any one time, I think, you know, again, with the change in fleet manager, that was part of the issue, and part of the issue was they just weren't as responsive in terms of repositioning the scooters, so in year one, I never got complaints that a scooter was parked in an area for more than a few days, and there were examples, the police department provided to me where we had a scooter that was parked in an area for, for a couple of weeks, which is not something that we want to see.
Do you know if there were any accidents involving?
There were a couple of accidents the first year, most of those were minor, the one accident that was the most serious was a, I guess, hit and run or hit and abandoned, where an operator of a Bird scooter ran into a parked car, led the scene, and the police department had attempted to get information regarding the user from Bird, it was dime me in those efforts by the legal department. The local representative and local fleet manager were certainly trying to do their best to help out, but we were never able to get through corporate legal that was concerned about privacy information to share that data. On the other flip side, the other incident we had, I was able to report the incident to Bird, they were able to suspend and terminate the operating privileges of the user in question. So we weren't able to press charges, but they kicked them off the system.
I gotta say, that sounds kind of strange.
We weren't, you know, both the police chief and I weren't really happy about this, as we talked about this, this past year, we haven't had a similar incident, but things that you'd have.
But if they're unwilling to give data about the person driving a car that causes property damage, that, that in itself might be a reason to.
Well, again, I think those might be issues that, the whole point of doing a pilot was to understand both in terms of the demand or interest in having a type of service, but also to uncover these types of operational issues that we could address through some type of regulatory scheme, so.
Did you get any revenue from?
Modest amount, there was supposed to be a revenue share of 20 cents per ride, I think a few thousand dollars over the course of a couple of years that we operated. And again, that might be something, because we're relying upon them to provide that, that monetary remuneration after the fact, based on ridership data, there's always a lag as opposed to charging a fee upfront on an operator to use the public, essentially what we're doing, license law, they count penalize the public right of way to restore.
I think in terms of like data on issues, we didn't really have, I mean, I got a lot of, I was on the RTM and I got a lot of emails, complaints, and the complaints, some of them were that there was no way of really, that you didn't know who to call, and if you called one party, they told you to call the, the manager and the manager would say, call someone else, and we didn't really have a data collection or, or a complaint sort of hotline set up, so it would be hard to know, you know, how many issues there actually The other thing that, that I felt, felt was that this town isn't really, like, we don't really have the infrastructure that makes it easy to do this because our, you know, our, some, some cities have like really big sidewalks, there were
Bike lanes.
Bike lanes, yeah.
It might get easier.
This makes it hard because they're actually sharing the road with cars, you know, which makes it.
Yeah, and one of the concerns we had downtown, and we asked Bird, which they did do, was retard the speed so they can adjust the speed limit, they're typically set for, I think, 25 miles per hour, we asked them to lower the speed limit within the downtown because they're all GPS enabled, so 15 miles per hour just to give people a little bit more time to react, because of, you know, we don't have dedicated lanes like that, so there is a lot of folks that are, you know, using the, the public right of way to drive and so we were concerned about potential issues there.
The theory makes sense, right, like to get the, the last mile, you know, you get people off, out of cars during the nice weather, I know one person who takes it to the train station to work in the morning, an adult, but if, but the problem is if they're riding in the middle of the street, they're not actually helping, probably not actually helping traffic that much, but who knows? How about e-bikes, has anyone contacted you about?
We have not, Bird does provide an e-bike service, they, they were not, we have not solicited proposals from anyone to provide bikes, again, most people, we had a small pilot program with the health department for a while with, with Zanes, and the issue was in terms of somebody to manage the fleet and maintain the bikes, we have a lot of folks that obviously, there might not be as much need because there's more privately owned bikes, people will use their own rather than something.
So Mark, what's the next step if, if we don't?
I think the next step would be, again, I wanted to bring it to your attention now because if we want to tell Bird that, thanks, but we want to pause for a while at least or think about what's next, we need to do that by next, by March 20th, because that'll be 30 days prior to the renewal of the operating agreement, so otherwise, we can simply let it roll, it'll just continue the way it has been, but again, at some point, I do think that we've probably gathered enough data and we need to think about, you know, whether we should continue a pilot or create some type of regulatory structure whereby an operator could, could provide this type of service if we think it's. We don't need to do anything today, but we, if we want to do something different, you need to do it probably this time next month.
And if we want to terminate, I guess we would have to vote on that.
Yeah.
Okay.
One more question, for the demographic information, can you tell how many people ride, take it to the train every day, just destination, like what it's being used for, just in terms of, are people, is it the functionality of it as opposed to just kids riding around town having fun with it?
I think, you know, certainly when we launched, I believe that we can get, capture that because we can see it on a daily basis, I'm not sure about the aggregate and what, what lessons we can learn from it, definitely when we launched, it was a novelty factor, a lot of people were using it to joyride more or less around town. I think once the bills came in, it kind of subsided a little bit, and now with the use of facial recognition technology for new accounts, for sure, we've seen fewer and fewer young people, you know, circumventing the system, they're not, it's not foolproof, we certainly see still people that shouldn't be on these rental scooters riding them, but I do think, you know, there's a high percentage of all the college-age students that are taking it from campus at Fairview to downtown, the beach area, that's where the preponderance of the trips are.
Any, any other questions or comments from the board? None, public, oh wait, this is not a voting item, never mind, thank you, thank you. And item number nine, to hear an update on Penfield Pavilion, Eli?
Eli.
Thank you, John.
Thank you.
All right, Penfield Pavilion, we've had meetings with all the contractors, kickoff meetings to kind of understand what their constraints are or what their needs are for the job, so we've had all those, they're in the process of mobilizing equipment, staff and materials, so that's happening, and the first step will be to remove the decks and the rails, that way we can expose as much as we can of underneath the building, and that work we're anticipating to start by the end of the month, so sometime next week we'll start to do that. And Bismarck has a full-time superintendent that has been opening, closing the gate, that's where he's stationed, so things are definitely in the works at the Penfield front. I hope next month I have a little bit of a better update when work actually starts going, I can give a little bit of a, of a better update, but as of right now, we're working through the paperworks, we're working through getting the contractors there and working.
Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board?
Just refresh my memory with the, we were waiting for Phil to be brought on site at the beginning of the year.
The final hot spots.
The hot spots, is that? What I did to kind of accelerate that is I brought in some containers, like 30-yard containers, 40-yard containers, and we actually took the dirt and put it into the containers meanwhile, so it's out of the way of the contractors' work, and we're still waiting on approval from the facility unfortunately, but I heard that we're gonna have, hopefully by the end of this week, we'll have approval where we'll just ship those containers to the facility.
That's a Connecticut facility?
That is a Connecticut facility, yep.
Any other comments from the board, questions?
Maybe it might, you know, I, I noticed, you know, I'm always amazed by how, how much people don't realize about certain projects happening in town or the details of them. Maybe it would be helpful to send it out, Phil, you know, like another, like a Penfield update, just, you know, because it seems like people, you know, just talking to them in town, I'm always amazed because there was so much press and so much information and there's a whole page on it, how they don't know when it's gonna open and they're and they don't know what's really happening or how much it costs or things like that. Maybe just a, you know, hey, I just want to give you an update. Here's the link to the Penfield page, just so people can be reminded. Because I don't know why they don't know, but they don't know. I've dreamed about Penfield. How many people don't know? Good grief.
Thank you. Thank you, Eli. Item number ten, refunds tax collector. To consider an act upon tax refunds as recommended by the tax collector in the amount of seven thousand, seven hundred and two dollars and sixty-six cents. May I have a motion?
Second.
Any questions or comments from the board? Any from the public? Seeing none, all in favor, say aye. Okay, we have a motion to adjourn.
Can I just ask a quick question? When, when do you think we'll get the budget booked before the meeting next week?
We're going to send it out midday tomorrow.
Oh, okay, awesome. Thank you.
Sure. Motion to adjourn?
To adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Okay, we are adjourned. Thank you.
Thank you. Have a good night.
Good night.